We'll call the meeting on the Committee of Fiscal Affairs to order. Good evening, everyone. And first item of business is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on September 8th, 2014. I'll move the approval. Are there any changes, questions or comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a few action items that I'll run through quickly right now. The first is Action Item 1B, the Library Electronic Resources Omnibus Resolution. Request that the Board authorize the colleges and the university to enter into contracts to license electronic and other information resources in accordance with the law and university regulations not to exceed a total amount of $75 million during the term of this resolution. Any single proposed acquisition with an aggregate value of $5 million or more shall be subject to a separate approval by the Board. This resolution shall remain in full force and effect until November 30th, 2019. University is committed to providing high-quality information resources to support the research, teaching, and learning efforts of students and the faculty. I'll move the approval of Action Item 1B.
Second.
Are there any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next resolution requests the Board authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to purchase a subscription of Wiley Electronic Journals for all of the CUNY campus libraries. Such a purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $5,985,960 for five years. The collection of journals to be subscribed encompasses Wiley's premium package of social sciences, humanities, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics journals published generally from 1997 to the present in electronic format. This subscription is a continuation of purchases of our STEM resources for the libraries. I move the approval of Action Item 1C.
Second.
Any questions? Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a resolution requesting that the Board authorize the Office of Library Services on behalf of the university to purchase online access to full-text journals from the Elsevier BV, New York, to purchase online access to full-text journals from Elseus BV, excuse me. Such purchases for the individual colleges and the central office shall not exceed $10,300,000 for five years. The collection of journals to be subscribed encompasses Elsevier's full-text of science, technology, medicine, and social sciences journals. This purchase will also continue our continued purchases of STEM-related resources for our libraries. I move the approval of Action Item 1D.
Second.
All in favor, any questions? I'm sorry, comments?
Just one question. This is under an existing contract, so unlike the one that we dealt with before, it wasn't necessarily, didn't have to be advertised as its sole source. I assume it was advertised before. That true, say?
Yeah, this is an existing contract, and the reason we're doing Elsevier and the previous one Wiley separately is because the first resolution that we did, the omnibus, stated that anything above $5 million, we would have to, we would do separately. And so since this is, this is $10 million, we need to bring it to board. But we have had Elsevier services for several years. The contract expired, so this is a renewal of that contract.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Action Item 1E is a resolution requesting that the Board authorize General Counsel, the General Counsel, to execute three contracts on behalf of the university to provide as needed intellectual property legal services. These contracts are to be awarded on a basis of best value to responsive and responsible offers after the university's evaluation of proposal submissions provided in response to an RFP issued after public advertisement. The initial term shall be three years with two one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. Such services shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1.5 million. The university requires the services to assist the Technology Commercialization Office with legal issues related to the filing and prosecution of patents worldwide. I move the approval of Action Item 1E.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item F is the new Barry R. Fierstein Graduate School of Cinema will open at the Steiner Studios in the Brooklyn Navy Yard in fall 2015. The Fierstein School will offer a three-year specialized education in six disciplines, leading to a master's in fine arts degree in cinema art. Housed in a newly renovated 68,000-square-foot state-of-the-art facility on the Steiner Studios lot, the school will be equipped with the most up-to-date production, post-production, animation, motion capture, and other equipment. As such, it will boast a filmmaking environment comparable to the finest in the world. This resolution requests that the university adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students enrolled in the MFA program, MFA in cinema disciplines, starting in the fall semester 2015 and ongoing thereafter as follows. Effective in fall of 2015, resident and non-resident full-time students would be $4,140 per semester. Resident and non-resident part-time students would be $2,070 per semester. Effective in the fall 2016, full-time students will be $4,300, and part-time students, both resident and non-resident, would be $2,150. And effective fall 2017, full-time students, resident and non-resident, will be $4,470 per semester, and the part-time students would be $2,235 per semester. I move the approval of Action Item 1F.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mary.
What this fee will be used for? This fee, academic excellence? I'm sorry, academic excellence fee, what will it be used for?
So let me provide a little background about this program. And President Karen Gould from Brooklyn College is here, and she's there at the end of the table. So we're really excited about this program, and it's been several years in the works. This is going to be the first public graduate school of cinema in New York City, and it's going to be the only graduate cinema school in the entire country that's going to be on a working film lot at Steiner Studios. So we're really excited about it. And one of the best things about this program, it's been a true public-private partnership. In terms of the private, President Gould and her staff has done a terrific job raising funds from the Brooklyn College alumni. Of course, we have the partnership with Steiner Studios. That's, that's a key part of this initiative. And on the public side, not only is the university supporting this, but on, from the city, the mayor's office has put up funding, as has the city council, and the Brooklyn Borough President's office. So we're really excited about this.
And the New York State Senate.
Thanks, Karen. And the New York State Senate. This fee is seeing the resolution, about $4,000 a semester, a little above. And it's for a master's in fine arts. Now, New York State law requires that we charge the same tuition for all similar degree offerings. And so we have to, since we have masters of fine arts at other colleges, we have to charge the same rate, which is $4,825 a semester. So with the fee, it's going to be about $9,000 a semester, which is significantly lower than, than programs at the private colleges here in New York City, which you could see in the explanation on the resolution at NYU and Columbia and SVA. In terms of your direct question, what are these costs going to be used for? The revenue is going to be used to cover the costs of the program. They're all going to go back for this program. None of the funds are going to be used for any other purposes at Brooklyn College. They're all going to be invested back in the program. And so if it's okay with the Chair, President Gould, if you'd like to say a few words about it.
Yes, thank you very much, and I appreciate the question from the students. Glad to see you here. I would like to give you a framework for thinking about the approximately $55,000, which is what the price of being in the MFA program over three years will be for our students. If you compare that with comparable schools around the country, UCLA, 112,000, these are actual figures from now, Columbia, 115,000 for a three-year program, USC, which is one of the premier institutions in LA, 141,000, the American Film Institute, 151,000, and NYU Tisch, which might be our biggest competitor, $157,000 for a three-year program. So we will be a third, or just slightly over a third, of what these other primarily private and one public but very well-known UCLA institution are charging. Why do we need these additional funds? Because we are leasing facilities that we couldn't possibly reproduce on our campus. And one of the things that will draw our students to this wonderful graduate cinema school is that it is on a working lot. And I will say that the money raised is going into the construction and the preparation for the building to open. But every year, we will have to pay Steiner Studios rent in a lease, and it is significant because these programs are occupying nearly 60,000 square feet. It's a lot of facility. We will have nearly 300 students, well, over 300 students after three years in the building, in the MFA program track. So it is open for business. We already have students applying. There is a fierstein.brooklyn.edu website if you want to go check it out. It's very exciting. But believe me, we need these funds to make it possible. The most important thing to underscore for the students is that we have already raised through private and also public, through the mayor's office, 1.7 million for student scholarships. But we have a master plan capital campaign to raise $10 million for student scholarships. And I don't have any doubt that we will get that done rather quickly, because if you go to the website and look at our advisory board, these are heavy hitters who have joined us. So I think the word will be out.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. And with, as you described, this being a unique school in New York, this reminds me of a few years ago when we started the CUNY School of Graduate Journalism. It has now become the number one school of journalism. As for those of you at Columbia, I apologize, but nonetheless, this is the school that's in demand, and I hope the same thing happens here as well. Before I go any further, Miriam Jackalish-Feely, how's that? Do you okay? All right. I just want to welcome you. I'm sorry to not do that at the, at the top of the meeting, but, and again, thank you for asking the question. Any other questions? Any further questions? Who was, before I go, Barry Fierstein?
Barry Fierstein is one of our alums. He was the president of our Brooklyn College Foundation until last year, and he's a tremendous donor, and cares a whole lot about this school, so I think we will see many additional gifts in the future.
Is he from the industry?
No, he is a hedge fund manager.
We'll be sorry about that later. All right. The item is on the table. I've moved its approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
And all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Our final action item is consideration of the fiscal year 2015, 2016 operating budget request. I'm going to have Vice Chancellor Matt Sapienza discuss it first, then I'll start, I'll move the adoption of the proposal.
Great. Thank you, Chair Loda, and hello again, everyone. You have two documents at, at each of your seats. One is the actual budget request document that looks like this, and that was, was put on SharePoint a few days ago. But rather than go through that document, there's also a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint to summarize what's in the actual request document. So if we go to Slide 2, again, this is, this is for the fiscal '16 operating budget, and again, we're using the CUNY Compact as the vehicle to finance the budget request. It's the 10th year that we've been using the CUNY Compact. I know most of you are familiar with it. It calls for public resources to cover the university's mandatory costs and a small share of our investment plan, and the rest of the investment plan will be funded through internal resources at the university. I also want to point out that the budget request process was a real collaborative effort, and I want to thank some folks for their input on, first of all, the University Faculty Senate. Kate Conway is the chair of the Budget Advisory Committee, and they've provided some terrific feedback. We met with Joseph and the, and the leadership of the University Student Senate, also gave us terrific feedback on, on the needs of the campuses. And a Council President's Fiscal Committee meeting, which is chaired by President Matos Rodriguez, so, so failo thanks to you as well. I also want to recognize folks in the University Budget Office, Deputy Budget Director Kathy Abada is at the end of the table there, and they're the folks who, who do all the work to put together this, this request. So Kathy, thank you. So Slide 3 is a little more information about the Compact and about the partnership that we have with the state and city, our colleges, our students, and, and private industry in terms of fundraising. So if we get to Slide 4, I want to spend a little time talking about the rational tuition policy. I think as most of you are aware, in June 2011, state of New York passed legislation that enabled CUNY and SUNY to raise tuition $300 a year for five years. And so fiscal '16 is going to be the last year of, of that law, and the last year of the $300 tuition increases. And I wanted to provide a little background as to, for the first three years, what we've used those dollars to invest in at our campuses. And so we have added $152 million in new funds and programmatic investments over those three years. And let me just underscore that that's $152 million in new money that didn't go to fill budget shortfalls at the colleges, it didn't go to pay for mandatory needs. This was $152 million in new spending at our campuses. $91 million at the senior colleges and $61 million at the community colleges. And of that $91 million, $42 million went for new full-time faculty. 29 at the, at the senior colleges and about 14 at the community colleges. And that equates to 839 new full-time faculty lines that have been added to the campuses over three years. Our college presidents have just done a tremendous job using these funds to add new full-time faculty lines. That's been our top priority over the last several years as part of our budget request. And so the tuition dollars over the first three years of this legislation has had a real meaningful impact at our campuses, and the investment plan for this year will as well. So it's the last year of our tuition increases, as I said earlier. We are going to have to begin our lobbying effort with folks in Albany and the governor's office and the Senate and the Assembly. Even though the legislation doesn't expire for another 18 months or so, we need to begin those conversations with them so that we can have a rational tuition policy going forward. On Slide 5, another item that we have devoted much of the new tuition revenue for has been financial aid. We've set aside for the last several years $10 million of the new tuition revenue for financial aid for students who are at risk of not continuing their matriculation. The 2016 budget request that we're putting forth tonight continues that commitment for $10 million. And we've done several things with these funds. We have given students tuition waivers. We've enhanced the federal work-study program and, and added about $2 million to that program. We have assisted with the cost of textbooks by using the dollars to give out to the college libraries to purchase textbooks so that students can loan out the textbooks and not have to purchase them each semester. We've also had a component for graduate student financial assistance, and just this year, we started a support program for our returning veterans. So again, this has been a very successful portion of the Compact the last several years. We've gotten terrific feedback from the colleges as to the use of this. And keep in mind that this $10 million is just a very small component of the financial aid opportunities that are out there. The TAP award, as you can see there in the third bullet, is now increased to $5,130 this year. Pell is $5,730. And again, to give you just some background as to the total financial aid that's out there, we administered about $573 million in Pell grants that went to 145,000 students in, in the 13, 14 academic year, and $270 million in TAP that went to almost 98,000 students. So this year's request, Slide 6, is a summary chart of what we are requesting. Our adopted budget for this year is $3.1 billion, and you see the breakout of that by our three main funding sources, state aid, city support, and tuition. We are projecting that our mandatory cost is going to go up by $81.5 million in 2016, and we are asking for an additional 122.7 in programmatic initiatives that would bring our budget up to $3.3 billion. You see the note there on the bottom of Page 6 that the budget request does not include any amounts related to any new labor contracts between CUNY and any of our unions. We have begun discussions with Professional Staff Congress on a new labor agreement. Their, their labor agreement expired four years ago in October 2010. However, the budget request does not include, and none of these costs in this $3.3 billion include any new costs that would emanate from any new labor agreements.
Matthew.
Sure.
If our labor costs go up the way the cities, some of the new contracts, have you calculated if, if we are to follow what has happened in the city, what, what the impact would be?
Yeah, we, we have those numbers. You know, part of the challenge that we have in this round of bargaining is that the city pattern and the state pattern are very different. In past years, they have been close enough that we've been able to work out, you know, a hybrid type of agreement that's fit in with both the city pattern and the state pattern. But this year, as you point out, the city pattern is, is very different from the state pattern, and so that's something that, that we've been trying to work with the city and state folks on.
Probably if we want to go further, we probably want to do a consecutive session. Suffice to say, there's the labors that will be able to deal with some of this.
Slide 7 shows the, two pie charts, one for the adopted budget for this year and one for what our request would look like for our three main funding sources. And what I would like to point out here is that our request keeps in line the funding shares between tuition and state and city support. So although tuition is going up in 2016 by $300, our request keeps the portion of tuition that funds our entire budget at 44% and keeps the state and city support at the same percentages also. So we're asking everyone to contribute, both tuition and, and state and city support. Okay, Slide 8 breaks out the investment plan by both senior and community colleges and by four major categories: academic excellence, student success, economic workforce development and research, and energy conservation. And you can see there, the, by far the largest component is academic excellence, and I'm going to get into the components of each, of each of these items on the next slide, Slide 9. Academic excellence, $73 million, the largest component, again, as we, we touched on just a few moments ago. Again, next year, the largest component is going to be for the hiring of additional full-time faculty. We are hoping that the budget will include $54.5 million so that we can hire an additional 500 full-time faculty lines in fiscal 2016. Again, that's our top priority going forward. We're also including $7 million for expansion of CUNY's online education program so that we can enhance that and, and provide flexibility to our students in terms of scheduling their classes and giving them more flexibility in when they can attend class. $8 million for academic advising. What we've heard a lot from not only the students, but also folks at the campuses, is that they would like these dollars to go for technology upgrades to help in, in advising. It's always great to have more advisors on the campus, but what's happening throughout the country is that a lot of advising is being done through technology, and so we'd like to invest some of that, so those resources in expanding technological needs to help in advising. And then lastly, $3.5 million for international education and diversification for both students and faculty. That would include study abroad programs, international internships, and research collaborations with foreign institutions for our faculty. The next component, yes, I'm sorry, trust me.
The number 500.
Yes.
Where, where does that come from? Have the various colleges asked for faculty, and that's the, the number you allocated among them, or is it to be determined?
Well, at, at the end of the day, when, when both the city budget and state budget is adopted and we determine how much funding is available, the colleges will get back dollar for dollar what their tuition increase generates and plus additional state and city aid. But yes, the 500 is based on feedback that we've gotten from the colleges, and also is based on continuing to provide momentum for our, our faculty hiring initiative that's taken place over the last several years.
And as to the $7 million for online, in the materials that you sent to us, not this PowerPoint.
Yes.
Reference was made to an online degree program. Is that what the $7 million is about?
Some of it will be for online degree, for fully online degree offerings. Some of it will be to have hybrid courses where some of the courses are done online and some, some are done in the classroom. And what we also expect is that some of the funds will be used for professional development with our faculty to help them generate more online degree offerings.
Just to add a brief point to that, I, I think probably most of the funds here would go to program development, which is cost-intensive at the beginning. It could either be used for additional components of a degree program that's offered physically and online, or a complete online program. But I think we need to find some ways to try to jumpstart our positioning here a bit, and providing some incentives and some program development funds that faculty could compete for is one way to do that.
Do we provide an online degree today?
Yes. We do. And we just have a, a new one that started at, at John Jay College, a graduate online degree program that was approved late last academic year, so, so yes, but...
We have a number of programs through SPS as well that are online degree programs. In fact, we just approved a new one earlier today in a committee meeting for a master's degree in disability studies, so, at SPS. So there, there are some.
And are they all graduate degrees thus far?
No.
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 Yes, the SPS are often undergraduate.
Thank you.
Of the 500 additional faculty, how many of those are new positions and how many are replacements for retiring faculty?
This would all be new positions.
All new, so 500 additional people, and not including the replacement faculty who...
Correct. Correct.
I think, Matt, it might be true, though, at another meeting, if you could provide a breakdown of the net new faculty number, because at some campuses, our enrollment growth has been such that the number of courses taught by full-time faculty hasn't really changed despite tremendous efforts to hire faculty, so maybe we could look at those numbers.
Sure.
I'd also like to be curious, I know you say the faculty of the campuses asked for the academic support and to be done online through technology. I'd at some point love to hear a little bit more about that and how it's being used and the success. I've just noticed, being on campus, that that hasn't been as successful as one would expect it or hope to be, and the students are not, at least the ones I've spoken to, have not been very happy with what they're getting in terms of advisory in general, and I'm surprised that the movement of, of it moving more towards technology is the, is the solution. So I'd just love to hear a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I'll just give you a, a two-minute explanation and then, but it's certainly at a future meeting, we could, we could talk some more about it. I think that certainly these dollars would be used to hire additional advisors, but I think something that our colleges have, have asked for and that, that we could do better at in terms of technology is just keeping the students engaged through technology. And by that, I mean students receiving, let's say, a text message to say, hey, you haven't been at class the last three day, the last three sessions. Is everything okay? You know, I think in terms of students persisting towards their degree, a lot of times, students register for 12 credits and they don't realize that taking another course would be free because we do have tuition discounting at 12 credits. And so something that we've experimented at the College of Staten Island this past year was students that have a certain GPA that register for 12 credits, a pop-up comes up when they're registering to say, are you sure you don't want to take another course? By the way, it's free. It, it says it a lot nicer than I just did, but, but there are just little things like that that we can do that I think would help students persist towards, towards degree completion.
And we won't argue about this, but, but part of it is, it assumes the engagement of the faculty of, or one, knowing how to use the technology.
Correct.
And willingness to... --and willingness to use it. So--
You're right.
I'd hate for us to, I, I'd just like to see that the money and the training and the willingness are all on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point.
Professor Martel?
A couple, a couple, three, four questions. Uh, page seven, you lay out tuition versus state aid and it's 56, 44.
Yep.
And it's, it's constant and those numbers are correct, but it, it, it does seem to me that, that we do ourselves a disservice by the way we present this data, because on page five, we're told that 270 million of, uh, of that tuition is in the form of TAP. If you redigged that to include that in state aid, the number comes up to 64% being from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, in an area where we keep hearing concerns about tuition, tuition increase, tuition levels, et cetera, to remind people that net-net, uh, tuition remains a, relative to many, many other state institutions, a much smaller component than what the state is actually providing, seems like, you know, one way we could think about presenting that data. The other question I have is, uh, we've had some nice years here of expanding the faculty and been six, seven, eight percent budget growth. Now, should I retire now and skip 17 or, you know, what is the plan for fiscal 17, uh, in terms of, uh, this is tuition-driven institution. Should we start planning now for what, what may be a less than pleasant fiscal environment?
Yeah, and we've already, we've, we've begun discussions, uh, with the, with the college presidents about what the future may hold, um, in, in reference to, to your point about that the rational tuition policy ends in, in 18 months. Um, but at the same time, you know, we're very confident that, um, we've made terrific investments, um, on our campuses with the tuition revenue and that we can make the case in Albany to extend the legislation. Um, so we'll, we'll, you know, plan for that, but also have contingency plans with our campuses, uh, to make sure that, um, you know, we always plan for worst-case scenario. But, but again, we're very confident that, uh, that we can prove the case that, um, these dollars have gone to, to the real benefit of our students.
So we'll ask for another five-year compact in all likelihood. It'll have as a component predictable tuition increases.
And I, and as I said, I think if you recycle TAP back into the state aid component--
That's correct.
You're show, we're showing the fact that--
State is--
State is--
Much more than most public universities.
Yeah. I mean, I know that cuts two ways, but the, from a tuition increase perspective and the politics of that here in this town--
Mm-hmm.
--uh, it, it seems to me to be a, a, an easy story, easier story to tell when you explicitly account for the fact that TAP covers a nice chunk of those students' tuition who, in fact, cannot pay.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point. And I should also point out, we've been in discussions, not only with our campus presidents, but also with, with SUNY regarding strategizing about what the future holds in terms of the, uh, in terms of the state legislation. Okay, so slide 10, um, has some of the highlights regarding our student success initiatives. Um, $37.2 million, $3.8 million for career centers. Um, that, again, is something that, that we heard from the students that would be a helpful thing for our campuses to, to enhance. Um, three and a half million dollars for collaborative programs. Um, this is to help, um, expand some of the successful programs that we currently have with the New York City Department of Education. About three-quarters of our students come from the New York City Public Schools, so it's really critical, uh, that we, that we continue to strengthen our partnership, um, with the, with the DOE. Um, $4 million to provide enhanced services to students with disabilities. Um, the CUNY Leeds Program is included in here as well, which is a program that provides, um, both educational and vocational services to our students with disabilities, and it's been a really successful program over the last several years. Um, two and a half million dollars for the CUNY STAR Program, um, which is something that we began several years ago and addresses the remedial needs of students. Students in the CUNY STAR Program only pay $75 a semester, um, so that they can save their financial aid eligibility. They don't have to use their financial aid when they're in the CUNY STAR Program. And it's also been successful in, in getting students out of remediation and, and into the, to the, to the general associate degree population. Um, $4 million for library services. Again, as we mentioned earlier with the Student Financial Aid Initiative, a lot of these funds would be used to purchase textbooks that we can give out on loan in the library to our students and for electronic textbooks. Um, 1.3 million for the Single Stop Program. The Single Stop Program is something that we've had at our community college campuses since 2009. We also, um, opened the Single Stop Center at City College this year. And Single Stop helps students, um, receive all of the federal and state benefits that, uh, they're eligible for, but maybe they don't realize they're eligible for or they don't know how to go about accessing them. And since 2009, when we, when we, um, started the Single Stop Program, our students have received $66 million in additional federal and state benefits, um, that they likely wouldn't have received without the Single Stop. So this is a terrific return on investment for our students, and we're asking for 1.3 million dollars so that we can expand the program to all community colleges.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that number, given that ambitious goal, does that number ring true, 1.3 million? That seems kind of low for that. And, and I have to confess that I had not had much interaction with the Single Stop Program when we had visited Kingsborough Community College and we had done sort of a roundtable conversation with a lot of students. And they were just raving about it. And it was just, uh, I was a little embarrassed that it's something that I had not known a lot about. These were students who had been homeless. These are students, one had a, a, a domestic situation and they really credited the program for allowing them to, and these were the, these were the top scholars in the school, um, bringing this to, to our attention. So, wow, I'm a convert and that number looks low if you're going to all the CUNY colleges, unless it's just the community colleges?
Right. No, th- this would expand it to, to all of the colleges. It's already at the community colleges and city colleges, but, but, but you're right, trustee, that this is a, a very, very modest investment and--
Well, given, given the return, the, the return on the investment that you just outlined, $66 million in federal and state benefits and--
Right. The reason that the number's so low is because basically the software is there with, with Single Stop. Um, and really what the 1.3 would be, would be to staff Single Stop Centers at each of the campuses so that you could have a couple of people working at, at, at the center that can greet the student and help them go through the entire program. So, um, so I totally agree with you. It's a great point that it's a very modest investment for a, a tremendous return on, on that investment for our students.
Well, what is the total, uh, budget for Single Stop? I mean, this is just additional--
Additional. Right. Um, right now, um, at, for, um, for the, the existing community colleges and, and for--
So we're using four campuses now? Five, how many?
No, it was at the, the six, um, original community colleges and, um--
And city colleges now.
And this year we expand, we expanded it to, to City College. Um, and right now, we're spending, um, a little below a million dollars. Um, some of that the university has put up, some of that the individual campuses have, have invested their own operating funds in. Um, but again, it's been really successful and I'm glad to say that you, you had a good experience when you were at Kingsborough.
It was incredible.
Um, and, you know, we've heard that as well from, from the students and the staff at, at the community colleges.
But essentially, Matt, it's a referral program. They're not managing any of these benefits, so it's really a low investment because you're just getting a staffer to operate the system and--
Correct.
Correct.
One of the other things it does, gets the students to file for their income tax refunds.
Yeah.
Sure, if they don't do otherwise.
Provides free income tax filings, yeah.
Well, well, just, just from the, the small sort of conversations that we had, it, the impression that I got from the students that, that spoke to us, there was also a level of very sophisticated engagement that was refreshing to hear about. So I didn't get the sense that it was sort of like a kiosk where they punched numbers in and, you know, an aide passed them a, a piece of paper to go off some, you know, bureaucratic city agency. Um, so, hm? Those, those are from--
Well, and, and if I can add--
You did.
Mike fixed it.
We did.
In some campuses too, it provided, um, a launching pad to expand services. For example, at Ostos, it allows to tap into the resources, uh, pro bono of lawyers, uh, that then help our students on some cases. I mean, the infrastructure was there, we were able to expand it. Um, the same thing with, uh, you know, linkages to sort of tax providers to provide that service too. And, uh, I mean, as someone who was in a campus with that was before and now is in a campus that doesn't have it, I can clearly say that our students at Queens could clearly, you know, clearly benefit. So this is something that I'm sure my other colleagues in the senior colleges would also say it's, uh, it's a great service to the students.
But, but to answer Carol's question, your expectation is with this additional 1.3 million--
Right.
You can replicate at more of our colleges--
Yes.
--the results you've had thus far at the six.
Yes.
And if I understand from the materials you sent out earlier--
Mm-hmm.
--this 1.3 is going to be divided between the colleges and the community colleges. Correct?
Yes, it'll be to expand it to all of our colleges and to enhance the services at our community colleges. Because as I said earlier, a lot of our community colleges have invested their own funds to continue the program. Um, so yes, it would be, it would be university-wide.
Because the breakdown I saw was, I believe, 500 to the senior colleges and 750 to the community colleges.
Right.
That 500 is really fresh money for the senior colleges, right?
Right. That's correct. That's correct.
May I ask a question about the--
Sure.
--career centers?
Yeah.
Uh, again, this 3.8 is going to be divided between the senior colleges and the community colleges.
Right.
And my question, because outcomes are so important these days as to retention, as to graduation, are these career centers in every one of our schools?
Um, all of our schools have career centers. However, um, the disparity in the level of services that are provided at some colleges that do it well and some that, that don't do it as well, um, is, is there. Um, and so we want to make sure that the students are getting the same level of services throughout all of our campuses. Um, so they all have them, but some of them, they're real robust, um, offices that, that post jobs and, and have good connections with private industries. And some, you know, it's, uh, it's a person with, you know, a bulletin board and, and, and jobs, you know, posted up there for the students to go hook at. So, um, we want to make sure that, um, that we're providing the same level of career offerings to all of our students.
Who, who's going to oversee that? Would that come under Frank Sanchez?
Yes, Vice Chancellor Sanchez's office.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, and the last two items on student success are seven and a half million for student employment internships and, and matching programs with the private industry. You know, we're here in New York City and, and that's something that we're positioned to do is to have, um, more internships with, with private industry. And lastly, uh, $2 million to provide, um, a full-time, trained professional to help our returning, um, CUNY veterans, um, to provide the services they need, not only educationally, but also in, in getting readjusted to civilian life. Slide 11, um, describes the $29 million for economic workforce development and research. The, the lion's share of this is $20 million in operating funds for the new Advanced Science Research Center, the ASRC, which opened, uh, this past fall on the, on the campus of City College. Um, it really was the, the capstone to the decade of science which started in 2005, and we're really excited about the center opening. Um, but of course, in order to have the, these high-end research opportunities, it is costly and it's $20 million, not only for the staffing, but for the maintenance of, of the high-end equipment that's there. Um, and so we're asking for $20 million for the ASRC in operating funds. Four and a half million to develop new health professional programs and to, um, improve existing, um, education preparation programs. Most of the teachers that, that, that teach in New York City Public Schools, um, come from CUNY colleges. Um, and again, same with health profession. Um, a lot of health professionals come out of the community campuses and health professions is such a large portion of the New York City economy. About 12% of all jobs in New York City, um, are in the health professions. And then four and a half million dollars to expand, um, workforce development initiatives. And again, the, the breakout of that is, is more heavily weighted on the community colleges that do a lot more of the, the workforce development programs. Um, so we have $3 million at the communities and about a million and a half at the seniors. Terry?
I'm delighted to see the $20 million for operating funds for the ASRC. We've spent hundreds of millions of dollars to put that up. It would be a mistake not to fund it appropriately, give it the, give it enough time to be able to let it stand on its own feet, whether that's three years or five years. Having spent the money we've spent on it, let's please make sure it has the opportunity to succeed. And you're telling me the decade of the sciences will be over in 15? You sure? It's gonna, a decade's gonna stretch out a little bit more? No, all kidding aside, we gotta, we, we gotta, with the money we spent there, I think, we've gotta make it go. Otherwise, it's just not right, period.
Agreed. Um, and then lastly, a million dollars for, for energy conservation. Governor Cuomo has a goal to reduce energy consumption by 22% by the year 2020. We're included in that goal, uh, our CUNY Conserves Program, which is, uh, run by our Deputy Chief Operas Iran Spalter and our Director of University Sustainability, Triet Case. Um, they've really been leaders in both at the city side and on the state side through the CUNY Conserves Program, um, in helping both the city and state reach their energy, uh, consumption reduction goals. Um, and so a million dollars would go to, to enhance not only that program, but to help our campuses meet that 22% reduction goal by 2020.
I'd, I'd like to emphasize what Professor Martel said about the, the center. I, I went to visit it. It, it's a world-class, world-class building, uh, and met some of the faculty there, and they're extraordinary people. And I think this one and a half million dollars that you allocated for technology transfer--
Yes.
--I think will pay back in spades. But I, I have a question about how we go about building a building like that for, as you said, hundreds of millions. We didn't budget anything in that for operations, because I understand the 20 million is what they need, you know, to keep the, keep the lights on.
Right. Uh, well, right, to keep the lights on is probably about 3 million of the 20, but, but--
It's the annual operating--
It's the annual operating cost. No, you're absolutely right. Um, unfortunately, for the last several years, when we've received capital funds to put up new buildings, um, we have not received the associated operating funds to, to cover those costs that you described, trustee Schwartz. So we've been internally funding those for the last several years. And the costs for the ASRC in the current year, we're internally funding as well. Um, and so we feel that the ASRC, um, really is in line with the, with the governor's goals of, um, of STEM initiatives and research initiatives and workforce development. Um, and so we think that this is a, um, not only a legitimate ask, but also, you know, an important request to include as well. Um, so while we planned for it internally, um, we really feel strongly that this is, um, a cost that, um, should be picked up from the state, and that's why it's included in our request.
Well, I'm agreeing with you. I, I'm just wondering why we didn't ask for it when we asked for the hundreds of millions to build it in the first place.
Right. It wasn't our request last year as well. Um, and we didn't receive anything.
Right.
So the answer, we asked, and the answer was no.
Yes, that's correct.
What happened routinely for the last several years is when we build a building, in our mandated costs, which were always funded, operating costs in new buildings were always included and always funded, that changed three years ago.
Thank you.
A lot of privates won't build unless they also raise an endowment to cover operating costs. I mean, that's basically the way it is at Yale. Um, and so the privates typically do look at operating costs and get them covered before they'll agree to build a building.
Right. And again--
Yeah.
To be clear, we'll be doing that going forward. The rules changed a few years ago.
So this is baseline budget, 20 million?
Yes.
Forever?
Yes.
Okay.
At a minimum.
At a minimum rule. Thank you.
Okay, slide 12, um, is a summary of our mandatory increases. The 81 and a half million that we talked about earlier. Biggest component of this is always fringe benefits. Um, $46 million projected increase for fiscal 16. Um, the fringe benefit increase rates are, are slowing down, which is a good thing. A few years ago, they were growing at a clip of about 10 to 11% a year, and that's been coming down to 6 to 7% a year. Um, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, energy, 11 and a half million dollars. Our senior colleges especially have done a-- Our senior colleges especially have done a terrific job of managing their energy budgets. We decentralized the energy budgets to the campuses and they've been doing a terrific job of managing their energy costs. Building rentals, $8.2 million. Just to go back to an earlier item, the Brooklyn Cinema School at Steiner Studios, the lease for that is included in this $8.2 million cost. And contractual salary increments, these are what we refer to as the steps. Our folks that are part of the PSC that are in the faculty union and folks that are in the higher education officer series move up steps every year until they get to a maximum level. And that costs us about $10.6 million a year on a university-wide basis. So we're including that mandatory cost. And then lastly, OTPS inflationary costs, $5.2 million.
We didn't get all of this last year. We didn't get steps.
We didn't, right, that's correct. The state-funded our fringe benefit costs last year, which was terrific since that's the largest component. But none of these other mandatory needs were funded last fiscal year. So on slide 13, financing the request, this is how we're proposing that we're going to cover this entire $221 million increase cost. And so we're asking the state and city to pick up all of our mandatory needs, $81.5 million. And we're asking the state and city to pick up a portion of the investment plan, $32.3 million, which would be 23.3 from the state for the four-year colleges, $9 million from the city for the community colleges. So again, we think it's a very modest portion of our overall funding ask. The community college stated increase of $17.2 million equates to an increase of $250 per student full-time equivalent. Thing is, most of you know the state has a funding formula that's in state law for each community college student. This year, the rate is $2,497 per student. And we are asking for a $250 increase for next year. And as part of our request, we are asking the state to make a three-year commitment to increasing community college base rates. We're asking for a $250 increase, not only for fiscal '16, but for fiscal '17 and '18 as well, a three-year commitment so that our community colleges can do some multi-year planning. The other thing to keep in mind is that, I mentioned just a minute ago, that the rate for this year is $2,497 per FTE. In 2009, that rate was $2,675 per FTE. But as a result of the recession, there were four straight years of reductions at the community colleges. And so we're not even back to where we were in 2009. And if you add inflation on there, we're really behind where we should be. And so we're asking for a three-year commitment increases of $250 a year for each of the next three years. Our tuition revenue from the next $300 increase, $73 million is included in there as well. And plus our internal resources restructuring our budget to find efficiencies, $7.5 and $10 million from private fundraising. So last slide, next steps. We're planning on presenting this request to the full board at our December 1 meeting. Once approved by the board, we will share it with all of the elected officials, the State Division of Budget, the City Office of Management and Budget. The governor will issue the 2016 state executive budget usually in mid-January. So our request will be in the hands of the governor and the State Division of Budget well before then. And also in January 2015, the mayor will present his, what's called the preliminary budget for fiscal 2016 as well. So happy to take any additional questions and thanks for your time.
Just one question on the philanthropy, the private funding. How does that work? You've got $7 million to the senior colleges and $3 million to the communities. How does that happen?
So what we've been doing since we began the compact is we've been requiring each of the colleges to finance part of their compact through fundraising. And so these are targets, so for the $7 million for the seniors and the $3 million for the communities, each college is given a target that they have to raise. And usually, this is a very small component of what their total fundraising would be for the year. But basically, what we're requiring to do is to use a portion of it to fund the initiatives in the compact.
Thank you.
What are we raising across the university in a year? $200 million?
Yeah.
$250?
I think it was $250 last year, yeah.
Well, Yale raised $800 and it's a tiny fraction of the size of CUNY. Of course, it's a little different. People named Mellon go to Yale and so forth, but...
I think, you know, the encouraging thing about our fundraising efforts is that, you know, if you go back 10 years or so, the colleges combined were earning probably around $50 million.
Yeah. The fundraising has gone up very rapidly, but I think it's still nowhere, it's not, it should double again over the next, well, it's gone up five times over the last 10 years. So what I'm hoping is that we can double it in the next 10. But CUNY ought to be able to raise a lot of money. We have a lot of successful alumni and huge numbers.
Agreed.
And a Nobel laureate.
Sorry. Any other questions? This is...
Right, we have the resolution.
I'll move the budget. Yeah, I'll move to approve it.
I'll second it. Any further questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. We're now going to move to the subcommittee on investments. At this time, first item of business is approval of our minutes of the meeting from September 8. I'll move them. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Information items A and B need to be conducted in executive session. So we're now moving into executive session. But while we're doing that, would it be possible to find somebody to turn the air conditioning on? Thank you.
Peter had to leave and he asked me to chair the audit committee subcommittee meeting in his absence. The first action item we have is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on June 2, 2014. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments on the minutes, revisions? Already, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? The minutes are adopted. Item 1B is approval of the financial statements for fiscal year 2014. We're going to hear a presentation from KPMG on that. Cheryl?
Okay, I'll take it away. Good evening, everyone. So I believe everyone received a draft of the financial statements of the university Friday. So we can go through those after the presentation if you like. And then we just passed around a PowerPoint presentation that includes our required communications and the results of the audit. And we also passed around our latest 2014 higher education industry update survey. So to begin in the presentation, starting on slide 2, I have included our KPMG engagement team. So a lot of different members of people on this slide. But I did want to point out that we have with us today are Selly Bernardo. She is the Watson Rice partner. And as you remember, in the spring when I was here, we noted that this year, under the contract, we are subcontracting to another firm for 20% of the audit effort. And Watson Rice is assisting us with that. And she is the partner who was responsible for helping us provide the staff. And we had two staff associates that worked underneath our seniors as part of the audit this year. Okay, on slides 3, 4, and 5, I have included the responsibilities of management, the audit committee, and KPMG. Slides 3 and 4, no changes, and all of the responsibilities are also included in our engagement letter. But I wanted to speak about a few points on slide 5. In the first bullet, our primary responsibility is to form an opinion on the financial statements, that they are fairly presented in all material respects and conformity with GAAP. And we do plan to issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements this year. And we also wanted to point out that with respect to 25 of 74 of the discretely presented component units, we do rely on the opinions of the other auditors. And those 25 are primarily the foundations. So we are not auditing the foundations, but they are included in the reporting entity of the university and are shown, as they were last year, in a separate column, in a discretely presented column. With respect to those financial statements, we do get them all from the foundations. We do review them for consistency with appropriate GAAP. And we do require them to confirm to us that they are independent with the university and their respective foundation. Okay. There are...
Excuse me, are they audited?
They are all audited, yes. They are audited by different auditing firms. And we get them as part of our process and review them, but we do not separately audit them. We're just relying on the opinions in terms of our opinion. Slide 6, the timing of our audit did not change from what we had proposed back in May. We performed our interim procedures, May through August, and we visit all of the campuses during that time, performing our internal control procedures and our A133 test work. And then the pending matters are listed here. There are a few items that we are wrapping up over the next week or so and we hope to be able to issue in probably a week or two the full set of financial statements. If there are no questions so far, I will turn it over to Jason, who will walk us through some of the audit areas.
Good evening, everyone. On slide 8 and 9 are the areas of audit focus. This is where, certain areas to where we deem that there could be a significant risk of material in this statement, or there's areas of estimation or judgment involved in developing the financial statement amounts. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the more significant areas where we involve some more of our detailed testing as well as specialist involvement. So for the valuation of the OPEB liabilities, those are other post-employment benefits, we do involve a KPMG actuarial specialist to review the assumptions used in determining the liability and perform detailed test work over the census data that's used to generate the population of the individuals that go into that liability year over year. The valuation of investments, the university has a pretty extensive portfolio in investments that we call alternative investments. Those would be your investments in hedge funds or private equity investments where the market values for those funds are not readily determinable. We actually use the net asset value and perform certain testing over that value each year to determine whether that the unaudited balances that they get from the fund, the university gets from the fund managers every June 30th is a reliable amount. So that involves looking at the audited financial statements of the funds, performing some backtesting of those funds to make sure that the amounts that they received, the university received at December 31st, which matches the audited financial statements, is a reliable number. And then roll forward those amounts with purchases and sales of those funds as well as any market changes based upon certain indices or benchmarks that they use to evaluate those funds. We didn't note any type of adjustments for those types of areas of focus. On slide 9, the university has several interest rate swap agreements related to its debt where the fair values of those third-party agreements are about $74 million. We confirm those values with the counterparties and we actually involve our own internal valuation specialists to determine whether those valuations are independently appropriate and accurately reflected. And we didn't note any exceptions during those procedures. We also have specialists review the university's tax compliance as well as specialists that review the general information technology controls over the accounting systems. And more of a focus with the IT on any type of change management program development, computer operations, as well as the conversions for any of the new IT systems this year. On slide 10, in terms of corrected and uncorrected misstatements, there were no corrected audit adjustments identified during our audit to date. And there was one uncorrected audit adjustment in the amount of $8.4 million related to scholarships which were recorded in fiscal year 2014 but related to prior fiscal year's tuition. Management had identified this adjustment, which primarily related to scholarships at the City College, and those scholarships were recorded in the wrong year.
Did we make an adjustment or we just, what do we do?
Well, the adjustment, it was posted this year. So while it was really an opening equity hit, but it was very immaterial, so we just took the scholarship discount through this year.
Thank you.
On slide 11, accounting policies in practice, there were no changes in significant accounting policies except what we identified in these two boxes below. And they are described in Note 2 to the financial statements. There was a new GASB statement that the university implemented this year, GASB Statement Number 70, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Non-Exchange Financial Guarantees, which established new accounting and reporting requirements for any government that extends a non-exchange financial guarantee to recognize the liability when certain qualitative factors and historical data, if any, indicate that it would be more likely than not that that liability will come to fruition and need to be recognized. There was no impact of the implementation of this statement on the university's financial statements. And the university does have four financial guarantees at June 30, 2014. Three of them are with the discretely presented component units and one is with a third party. They are described more in detail in Footnotes 14 and 17 of the financial statements. We did not know, and management did not know, any non-compliance or any going concern issues with these entities. So therefore, there is no liability recorded by the university as of June 30, 2014. In terms of non-GAAP policies, these are policies that while may not be in accordance with US GAAP, they are implemented to provide more efficiencies in the operations of the university, such as expensing library books rather than capitalization of them, or looking at certain dollar thresholds when doing year-end accruals for certain liabilities that may need to be reflected in the period prior to the fiscal year that the audit financial statements are being opined upon. We continue to monitor those policies year over year and conclude each year that there's no material impact for the use of those policies. And we again noted that this year as well. On slide 12, just a summary of our reports and other deliverables. So we will issue our report on the university's financial statements. And then other deliverables include the senior college audit report, which usually is issued a month after the, within the month after the financial statements of the university are issued, as well as the federal OMB A133 single audit report. This year, the university has, once again, the student financial assistance cluster as its major program. We've done test work on that program over the summer and we will usually issue this report and plan to issue this report within the February/March timeframe.
How close are we, how close is this to the final?
The financial statements?
Yeah.
Very close, it just has not been through concurring review yet.
Thank you.
In terms of some other matters for our required communications, in terms of going concern, we have no events or conditions identified that may cast substantial doubt on the university's ability to continue as a going concern. There were no significant pending litigation that required disclosure in the financial statements. There were no material instances of legal acts or fraud noted. And in terms of non-compliance with laws and regulations, any significant difficulties encountered during the audit or disagreements with management or management's consultation with other accountants, we did not note any matters to be reported. Any significant issues discussed are subject to correspondence with management. Prior to our retention, there were no matters to report. And any significant changes to our planned audit scope that we presented to you in the spring, there are none noted. On slide 14, according with the auditing standards, there are certain fraud risks that are specific to conducting a financial statement audit. Those are the risks of misstatement due to revenue recognition as well as management override of controls. We perform certain procedures, especially with revenue recognition, to ensure that the cash receipts are properly matched up with any receivables that have been recognized at the period end. We perform period-end cutoff testing to ensure that the period-to-period recognition of revenue is appropriate and consistent. And also perform test work over any unearned amounts where cash is received, but the requirements to recognize that as revenue this year have not been met and they're appropriately held up on the statement of net position as a liability. Also, in terms of management override of controls, these usually involve controls over journal entries. We focus on any significant audit areas that have significant fraud risks associated with those and test the journal entries to make sure that there's no evidence of management bias or override of controls, as well as any post-closing or top-side entries that bring the closed-out general ledger to the financial statement amount because that is a manual process. We ensure that there's no evidence of any fraud associated with that and we have not noted any during our audit procedures.
We need to wrap this up because we've got a lot of work to do and we're hoping to get out of here in 10 minutes or so.
We're going to skip to 17.
Okay, in terms of regulatory and accounting of this, we just want to bring to your attention that GASB Statement 68, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions, will be effective for the university's fiscal year 15. It will impact the opening equity of the financial statements. And based upon reports that have been provided to the university... that have been provided to the university for their liabilities for the TRS and NICRS plans, that estimated amount will be about $650 million.
The city of New York early adopted 68, so they had their auditors do an assessment of the pension plan's liabilities for all the major employers. So we do have that number, and it's been through audit by their auditors.
Actually, the state asked us not to adopt it early and asked us to wait till next year to adopt it.
And just in terms of the uniform administrative requirements, this is changing the structure of the way federal circular OMB A133 was administered in the past, and more of a highlight for the university will be the changes that are coming down the pike for the way that a grantee will have to implement certain internal control policies and procedures to effectively manage their major programs.
This is a lot more relevant to a research institution, so RF CUNY is going to have a lot more to deal with in terms of the new circular. That concludes the remarks.
Okay, well, then, I'll move the approval of the financial statements for fiscal year 2014. Thank you very much for that report.
I'll second it.
Are there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? That is adopted.
Chairman, if I can, just, I just want to take a minute because I want to recognize our university controller, Len Zananti, and our deputy controller, Miriam Katowitz, and our director of financial reporting, Ken Torino, who's there in the gallery. To put together these financial statements takes months and months of work, and folks in the controller's office, while the rest of us were enjoying our weekends in August and September, were in the office on weekends, late nights. And so I just want to recognize that all of the long hours and tremendous work they did, not only protecting the university's fiscal integrity, but putting the financial statements together.
Okay, we are now going to move into executive session where only the trustees will remain for the meeting with...
Committee members? Committee members or trustees?
One campus enough, it's on him.
Okay, we're back.
So we have, we're coming to you with two items that we very, may well need KPMG's assistance on as extensions of their current contract for audit purposes. We're doing both of these issues in conjunction with the office of the general counsel. First one is the development and review of payment card industry activities. The use of credit cards is becoming more and more active, and our information services area under Brian Cohen has pointed out that we are not PCI compliant in many ways. CUNY, as a merchant and its related entities, takes in money through credit cards, the foundations, the university system itself, the performing arts centers, the childcare centers, et cetera. And we have no protocol for making sure that that payment information remains safe and secure. It's a very daunting task, and we may well need their help in framing and trying to get the university compliant. Second item has to do with an initiative that is out of the vice chancellor's office, and it has to do with incubators and accelerators with Baruch coordinating it. The incubator and accelerator that's currently being formed at Baruch and through John Clark is a very complicated series of venture capital initiatives that will develop and will receive stipends or awards or payments from the university or from philanthropy. And we want to make sure that the university is well-protected as well as the students are well-protected with respect to tax purposes. This is something that we don't do naturally, and it's, we are obviously in collaboration with the general counsel's office. So those are the two items.
Okay, any questions?
I apologize, I don't know, is CUNY setting up a venture capital fund?
We're sponsoring a series of incubators which may grow into accelerated businesses run by students.
It's to help the students who are interested in developing businesses.
Let's make sure...
Turn vital fiddles into a for-profit.
Yes.
There's only reputational risk in screwing this up.
Absolutely.
All right, if the committee members would like to hear more about this incubator program at a subsequent meeting, we can arrange for a report. So just let Hurd know if you want to hear more. Okay, I think that completes our business, and so I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. It's...